For real, let me have a taste of you. It's tasty, loving everything you do. Taste of the only thing I've ever do. Taste of, it's have a little taste of you. Taste of, let me have a taste of you. Taste of, loving everything you do. Taste of, the only thing I've ever do. Taste of, it's have a little taste of you. Taste of, oh. Taste of, taste of. Taste of. Taste of, oh. I won't say goodbye yet. Can I change your mind? Cause I don't think we're finished until I cross the line. Cause I can't let you go. I want you to know that I will make you mine. So before we dive in deeper, I wanna get to know you well, you well. Let me have a taste of you. Loving everything you do. The only thing I've ever do. It's have a little taste of you. Let me have a taste of you. Taste of, loving everything you do. Taste of, the only thing I've ever do. Taste of, it's have a little taste of you. Taste of, oh. Let me have a taste of you. Taste of, loving everything you do. Taste of, the only thing I've ever do. Taste of, it's have a little taste of you. Taste of, let me have a taste of you. Taste of, loving everything you do. Taste of, the only thing I've ever do. Taste of, it's have a little taste of you. Taste of, oh.
Never around, not making no sound until I'm undercover. You're running around, making the sounds until you run for cover. You are perfect, make no mistake. You fight every word until you run. I don't think I'll have a word to say. You make them dizzy, dizzy. Never around, not making no sound until I'm undercover. You're running around, making the sounds until you run for cover. You are perfect, make no mistake. You fight every word until you run. I don't think I'll have a word to say. You make them dizzy, dizzy. Never around, not making no sound until I'm undercover. You're running around, making the sounds until you run for cover. You are perfect, make no mistake. You fight every word until you run. I don't think I'll have a word to say. You make them dizzy, dizzy. Never around, not making no sound until I'm undercover. You're running around, making the sounds until you run for cover. You are perfect, make no mistake. You fight every word until you run. I don't think I'll have a word to say. You make them dizzy, dizzy. Never around, not making no sound until I'm undercover. You're running around, making the sounds until you run for cover.
I'm still having flashbacks of you and I. That night, your words were so hypnotizing. Our connection was so alighting. You've got me into this spin that I know I can win, but I want to at least try. I'm still having flashbacks of you and I. That night, your words were so hypnotizing. Our connection was so alighting. You've got me into this spin that I know I can win, but I want to at least try. Baby, you got me when you need me. Baby, you got me if you please me. Baby, you got me if you want me tonight. Baby, you got me if you tease me. Baby, you got me if you ease me into the zone that I need you tonight. Give it to me every day and morning. Give it to me when you hear me calling. I feel all your love, all your intrigue tonight. I'm still having flashbacks of you and I. That night, your words were so hypnotizing. Our connection was so alighting. You've got me into this spin that I know I can win, but I want to at least try. Baby, you got me when you need me. Baby, you got me if you please me. Baby, you got me if you want me tonight. Baby, you got me if you tease me. Baby, you got me if you ease me into the zone that I need you tonight. Give it to me every day and morning. Give it to me when you hear me calling. I feel all your love, all your intrigue tonight. Baby, you got me when you need me. Baby, you got me if you please me. Baby, you got me if you want me tonight. Baby, you got me if you tease me. Baby, you got me if you ease me into the zone that I need you tonight. Give it to me every day and morning. Give it to me when you hear me calling.
Wix gives you the power of AI to build the website you need. With full business functionality and a design tailored just for you. Customize every element of your website and watch your vision come to life in minutes. Control everything from the biggest tasks to the finest details. Personalized, optimized, ready to go live. When it comes to running your business, you make a lot of tough calls. Here's an easy one. Grasshopper trends.
Either way, oh, I'm good, yeah. Oh, either way, oh, I'm good, yeah. Don't forget about me and all the things I could give to you, baby. But I guess you can't see, making new memories with me. What happened till forever? Now we're not together. I know it's time you poppin' in a break. To see if you were down whatever, but I'm down together. But baby, know that I'm good either way. Yeah, I'll be okay. I'll be okay. Yeah, I'll be okay. I'm good either way. Yeah. I'm good either way. Either way, oh, I'm good, yeah. Oh, either way, oh, I'm good, yeah. Don't forget about me and all the things I could give to you, baby. But I guess you can't see, making new memories with me. What happened till forever? Now we're not together. I know it's time you poppin' in a break. To see if you were down whatever, but I'm down together. But baby, know that I'm good either way. Yeah, I'll be okay. I'll be okay. Yeah, I'll be okay. I'm good either way. I'm good either way. I'm good either way. Yeah. Either way, oh, I'm good, yeah. Oh, either way, oh, I'm good, yeah.
Great day everyone. Thank you all for joining today. As you all know, we have our quarter two town hall meeting happening today. We do have a special guest here as well. We have Ricky Shell and Yvonne Fernandez with TDECU. They just stopped by to introduce themselves to everyone. We are developing a partnership with them and we thought it would be great for them to introduce themselves to everyone today. So we're gonna go ahead and eat. You guys who are not here are missing out. So we're gonna go ahead and get some plates made. Then we're gonna have Ricky and Yvonne speak to us for a little bit and then we'll jump into the town hall meeting. So while we're getting our food, we'll be, I'll have the music still playing and then I'll come back and we'll introduce Ricky and Yvonne again, okay? So y'all, thank you for joining and stay tuned. So y'all, thank you for joining and stay tuned.
My name is Ricky Shell.
I'm Yvonne Fernandez.
We're TDECU. Thank y'all. Texas Dow employees credit union. I've been with the credit union for just over three years now, fresh out of college. I'm a U of H grad, living Houston my whole life. And I love the credit union. We are the largest credit union in the greater Houston area, fourth largest in the state of Texas, and we are growing. We've got about 400,000 members all throughout the state of Texas, about 35 different member centers, stretching all the way to the DFW area. And originally based out of Lake Jackson. And part of that growth, we actually just announced that we've acquired and are working through a merger with Sabine Bank out of Louisiana. That's really exciting for us because now we're potentially moving to a more regional credit union, potentially going to offer products and services outside of the state of Texas. But for now, this is our home. This is where we service our members. And we've got some really exciting products and promos we want to share with you all. I'll let Yvonne kind of talk a little bit about her experience person at that.
Yeah, so I've been with the credit union for nine years, been a mortgage originator since I started. I have about 15 years' experience as a loan officer, but been in a credit union as a whole for about 20 years. So it's been a little bit. I have that credit union mentality, so. And y'all are credit union members, more familiar with working with credit unions. I mean, we really are about focusing on the member, like what's right for the member. So at the end of the day, that's what we're always looking for, whether it's through our products or, you know, that one-on-one experience with them.
And so the biggest, I guess, one of our biggest priorities in mortgage right now is some of the challenges in this economy, affordability. And so we do have some really good loan programs that help with the affordability. We do have two no money down loans with no PMIs. Those are awesome. That's one of our flagship products. We just recently announced last month, and it's fully live and implemented, that we are waiving our 1% origination fee on all loans that are, that go through the easy and 30 or the 103 American Dream Home Loan. Those are both no money down loans. We are waiving our 1% origination fee. That's to anyone that uses and gets qualified for those programs. So for instance, if you're purchasing a $300,000 home, we'll waive that $3,000 at the closing cost on us. Very exciting. I mean, that can go far up to $5,000 of a half million dollar home. And when you combine that with bringing no money upfront as far as down payment, no PMI, I mean, Yvonne, have you had any instances where?
Yeah, I actually had a loan closed last week where we ended up getting their earnest money back because we had so much credit. So it ended up working out great for them. But yeah, I mean, we're really starting to see a lot of those situations where, you know, we waive the origination if the, you know, seller pays for title policy, if there's any seller contributions, all of these, all of these credits add up and, you know, at the end of the day, it really helps our member bring very little out of pocket the day of closing. So like you said, the most important thing we're trying to help here is affordability for, for our members.
Yeah, and just to also piggyback on that, we do have some wonderful promos that do stack along with this. One of these flyers that you'll see here is our new community champions promo. Yvonne, to talk about, members might qualify for that.
Yeah, so there's four industries, y'all, that qualify for our community champions promo. So it's active military, first responders, educators, and healthcare professionals. So anybody who is in those industries will be able to take advantage of 1.5% lender credit. And that's up to $7,500. So like you said, if you have someone doing 100% or 103% with no down payment and they fall in one of these industries, we'd be able to stack that on on top as well. So that's additional credit that will be able to apply for the closing costs. What I really love about the program is that it's not specific position. So it's not just a teacher that qualifies, or not just a doctor or nurse. It's anybody in that industry. So it could be the janitor at a hospital. It could be the front clerk at a school. Anybody who gets a paycheck from those industries will qualify for it. And that's how we verify it is who that payroll comes from. And if it's, you know, Methodist or an ISD, they'll be able to take advantage of that, that lender credit.
Yep. So very exciting. I mean, we also have a relationship-based pricing promo to help with interest rates too. There's a lot of information. We're gonna share this all in that desktop format where, you know, and understand it and have it readily available. And the biggest thing, right, and we understand that purchasing of a home, someone going through this process with an agent and a loan officer, and then it's an inspector, all these different people, you gotta be a team, right? You gotta be working together. You can't have, you guys can't do an excellent job as a real estate agent and have a loan officer that's not picking up, getting you guys a prequalification letter when needed, especially on the weekends. We understand that's when you guys are actually, you guys are showing people how, that's when they're off of work and can spend the time to work on their stuff. So that's also very important to us, being available. We're here to be a team player for you guys, resources.
I'll let my business card here, and it's on the flyer as well, but my cell phone number is on there. So y'all can call or text me there as well. It's usually I put this way, my cellphone. But you're welcome to email me if you have any questions. But yeah, cellphone is usually the best way to reach me if you have somebody that's interested in getting an application started or maybe even just has some questions. Share my cellphone number with them and I'm happy to reach out and go over that with them as well.
Yes, sir.
Yvonne.
How long have you been in banking industry?
In the banking industry, it's right at, right under me, 20 years.
Question. In regards to different bank accounts you should have, I know credit union is a great bank to set up, right? How active do you have to be as a customer to open up the account, create questions and so forth for that picture? And do you have to be a customer to get the credit that you're, you're trying to write?
So as far as, yes, it's a really good question. We get that all the time. So you do have to be a member of the credit union to get any loan with us. However, you don't have to be a member to apply. So we can go through the whole process and get them prequalified. Once we know, we guess, we're gonna really move forward, we'll establish that membership for them. So.
It's, it's super easy.
It's, it's actually $5 that we fund, $5 to open a savings account. The savings is what creates the membership with TDECU. So we'll fund that $5. We'll open all of that. We'll send them the documents to open the membership and there's no minimum balances or anything that they have to maintain.
It doesn't have to be seasoned.
No, no, it does not have to be seasoned. And in order to qualify for membership, the person has to either live, them or a family member, live, work, or worship in the state of Texas. So it's super easy. We're not, that may seem to a specific type of person or you are in a new form or associated with Dow chemical. You don't have to be a Dow employee or associated with Dow or anything like that to, you know, apply and become a member. It's super easy.
Yeah, our membership is open to the entire state of Texas. So anybody in the state will be able to qualify for a membership. It's just $5 that if we're doing a mortgage, we'll fund it for them. If they were to walk into a branch, they would have to do the deposit there, but they don't have to do that. We'll take care of it for them.
Now, with that being said, I'm assuming again, credit union would be more competitive than we say, thank you, America, as far as, or maybe using a small, local bank to do a pricing.
Yeah, well, we try, we try to be, yes.
At the end of the day, that's, credit union as a whole, that's what we're looking out for. We're looking out for the members, so we're trying to get the better rates, whether it's on the loan side, having lower rates, or on the deposit side, where we have higher dividend rates, where you earn more from your money that you have deposited. So we're always looking forward to that.
Are you speaking on that part today?
We, we can touch a little bit about that. We don't, we're not necessarily working with the retail folks, but I know off the top of my head, for instance, we've got a 5% CD that's really popular right now. We do have a high-yield checking account that just launched.
Kind of like 4%?
It's like 4%, I want to say. And we could definitely send you some, share some information about it because that is a great point you have. When someone joins our credit union, they're becoming a member, which is equity in our credit union. That's how we're able to offer some of these portfolio programs. Because we have states from the target of the state of Texas and you are an owner of this credit union. Yes, ma'am?
And you say as long as they live in Texas, but they have, did you say if they have relatives in Texas? They don't live in Texas, but they have relatives in Texas?
Yes, we're, you know, we want to, so for instance, if someone lives in Oklahoma or Louisiana or something like that, and they have family members that live here and they're trying to make a purchase, we would do our due diligence to see, you know, is this person intending to occupy this home or things like that? But in order to qualify, there should be, for a membership, there should be no issues.
So your reference to relationship-based opportunities, that has to do with like how long you've been a member?
Oh, no, excuse me. Okay, so I kind of touched on that, but I didn't dive into that. So that's what that is, is another promo that we're offering. And it'll, it'll lower your interest rate by an eighth of a percentage on your mortgage loan. In order to qualify that, the relationship-based pricing is the internal thing. So the member would have to get either, they'd have to pay insurance quote from our insurance line of business. That's what I mean, the relationship. So they don't need to go with the insurance policy, they just need a quote and do one of the two following things. Either set up automatic payments on a mortgage or ask for their taxes and insurance. So they have to get the insurance quote and then either auto payment or S. And then that, that would automatically qualify them for the eighth of a percentage discount. And again, you know, Yvonne, we don't expect you guys to understand or remember all, or just remember all of this. So that's why Yvonne and a loan officer you work with, it's, they're gonna know, right, that we have these promotions available. And maybe in the best interest of your client or member to give them the best deal possible.
But that is the intention of that for the relationship, because we are a full-service credit union. So like you said, we do have, you know, all of the deposit side, like savings, checking, CDs, money markets, you know, but in addition, we also have a full-service insurance company. So we're trying to build a relationship with this person. We're not just trying to do a loan for them. We really want to build a relationship with them. So that's kind of the idea of this. That's kind of the idea of this. I mean, we wanna give them an incentive for, hey, listen to, um, you know, what we have to offer. You don't have to use our insurance, but at least just give us a chance to show you what we can. They decide to go with ABC insurance, that's perfectly fine, but at least we've showed them what we have to offer. Um, but, but yeah, that's the idea is to show our members, you know, that we wanna build that relationship and give them, you know, a, a little perk there, you know, as far as. Their, their mortgage rate goes.
All right, well, thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, y'all. I hope you're doing things on a regular basis because we're all really building that relationship and offering that opportunity for our agents to take advantage of what you all provide. So thank you for hanging out with us a little bit.
Absolutely.
Thank you, thank you.
We'd like to eat here. All right, what's up, y'all? Can y'all hear me online? I can see if y'all can hear.
Yeah, we can hear you. Yeah, we can hear you.
I can hear.
I wanted to make sure I could hear y'all. All right, y'all missed some good chicken. Hey, shout out to Ms. Jackie. Shout out to Ms. Jackie for supplying the green juice today.
White, delicious.
Great setup for Fourth of July weekend. Kim is dressed for the summer. Hopefully y'all got big laughs for July. Yep. Okay, let's do it. Let's do it. But listen, so town hall meet, um, glad that y'all are here. I, I get super excited about the town hall meets because it gives an opportunity to really just showcase. Organization wide, a lot of things that are in my head. Like, for many of y'all, probably ain't realized this already. I'm always thinking about stuff. Always got stuff in my head. I had to tell the fun the other day and I can't listen to the radio no more. With the voices going on in my head of what we're thinking about. We all got voices, Mark. I'm like, I ain't got. But this, this is a, this is a good opportunity for me to kind of let it all out. Uh, if you notice, we, we started using this term season, right? So like this is the season one town hall meet. Um, coming into this year, what we decided from a programming standpoint was to break things into seasons, right? Uh, because as you all know, we do a lot when it comes to social media. We do a lot when it comes to our events, our lunch presentations, our summits, our buzz tours. So from a planning standpoint, from an annual planning standpoint, we started introducing the season concept. So what it looks like is from January to May, that's considered season one, right? Uh, and it also gives us an opportunity to reset, right? So we said, kind of look at what kind of performance we had for the first five months. Um, and, and just kind of have that preliminary conversation in, within the year. So season one is January to May, right? And then season two is June to October. So now you all know we do our big annual real estate summit in October. So we felt like the summit would be a great accumulation to the year. And what that does is, is that that'll allow us November and December, and we know things slow down in November and December anyway with the holidays. To really kind of assess the first ten, ten months and begin planning for the next, for twenty twenty-five. So it's really, from an annual planning standpoint, that's where the season concept came into play and why we could, we've begun using it this year. All right, so, so today, we're gonna be talking about what has taken place over the first five months of twenty twenty-four. All right, y'all on the same page?
Yes.
All right, good. All right, so let's jump into it. I, I always wanna start off with, see, you know what, I'm starting with my, with my town hall meetings and I'm gonna start offering, uh, uh, raffles and prizes to see if y'all know. What our stuff is, right? I mean, y'all knew we had a core ideology. All right, now how many people can say what it is? So we have a, we, yes, we have a core ideology. Our ideology is like the culture. Somebody says, well, what's the culture of your company? The ideology is what, what we revert back to. And it's made up of three components, right? It's the thing, it's, it's the lifeblood. It's what, it's what fuels us as a brokerage firm and, and has fueled us over the last fifteen years. So it's made of a three components. How many components?
Three.
Three components, yes. The first component is a core goal, right, to be the number one real estate company in the state in production and profitability, right? Now, does any, could, who can tell me who's the number one real estate company in the state in production and profitability right now? All right, it is a Keller Williams office, right? Cause y'all know, you know, Keller Williams has that little line under there that says each office is independent, right? Right? So we can't get a credit to Keller Williams. It's gotta be ours. So if you had to guess.
Metropolitan?
Uh, metropolitan, so that's it. That's here in Houston, right? Now think about it, we're talking about the whole state. Right? So do we think that the largest brokerage firm is located here in, in city of Houston?
Dallas.
Dallas, right? It is in the Dallas area, right? Um, so, and we're gonna look at a, um, a slide that kind of speaks to the statistics, just to give you an idea. So now, before I show you that slide, how much production do you think the number one brokerage firm in Texas does? Volume-wise, is it fifty billion, hundred million? Okay, so Margaret says a hundred and twenty-four million, right? We're talking about in the twelve-month period, so a hundred and twenty-four million. Anybody think it's higher or lower?
Higher.
Higher, higher, what, what?
Like.
Two hundred fifty, like two hundred fifty, higher or lower?
Yeah, higher.
Higher, higher, where we at? Five hundred million, five hundred million, is that the highest? Okay, so five hundred million, five hundred million. All right, so five hundred million. All right, so how many transactions do y'all think? In the year, twelve months, you know, so like five thousand, okay, five thousand.
Twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand, okay, anybody think that in twelve months? We're talking in twelve months, twenty thousand. You think anybody, larger than twenty thousand? Hey, hey, the question. So how many agents y'all think there are? So we got half, we got five hundred million, we got twenty thousand transactions. How many agents y'all think there are?
Four hundred and seventy.
Four hundred and seventy?
Oh my god. Less, less.
Less than, less than four hundred? All right, so what we, what? Fifty, fifty? I would say they have a lot of agents. Margaret said sixteen thousand. Sixteen thousand, okay, two hundred and fifty, that's, that's less than sixteen thousand. So sixteen thousand, so have a, have a, five hundred million. Um, what do we say, twenty thousand transactions, right? Sixteen thousand eight.
That's two.
Okay, Jackie said it's two minutes. All right, so I'm, I'm, I'm gonna leave y'all guessing as I go through the rest of the ideology. But I promise you, the next slide is gonna reveal all answers to who, who the number one is. But my point is, whoever it is, whatever the numbers are, our goal is to be that brokerage firm, right? So it gives you a frame of reference of what we chase. All right, so our mission is to create a greater experience for every stakeholder of the real estate community. While on our way to one day successes in, in assisting individuals with their real estate needs, right? So what we did with our mission, if, if any of y'all have been paying attention, we've actually added to our mission. This was something that we did this year. Right? Cause previous to this, for years, our mission was just the, the first part, to create a great experience for every stakeholder of the real estate community. It was just that, right? But this year, I was like, we really need to have some kind of connection to consumers. Cause that right there is really for the profession, right? For the agent, for the lender, TDCU, for the, just for the professionals that, that's in the market. But we do all of this for the consumer, like for somebody that has a real estate need. So how can we create a mission that connects us to who we're really here to help? And that's where the one day success is in assisting, I mean, and satisfying some of our real estate needs, right? And I picked the, I picked the number one million. Yeah, yeah, who thinks taking, figure out why I picked the number one million, like where I get from?
The number one what?
One million. I said, so one million on our way to one million success. What y'all think I got there from?
It's never ending.
It's never ending. All right, what's it? One million, what y'all think I got it from? No? All right, so when McDonald's first came out. On their signs, they used to say, one million hamburgers sold. And now it's like a billion, like over a billion hamburgers. But that's, that's kind of where I got that, that whole lot here from. So I want us that one thing to be able to say, over one hundred, over one million people, one million real estate needs satisfied. Okay, so our values, so six values, like this is really what encompasses, this is kind of like the profile of. When you say you're a Brooks and Davis agent, what are you really saying, right? So you exceed the expectations of your clients, customers, and colleagues. Right? You're saying that constant positive attitude. Well, I know the benefits of positive attitude. Ain't right. Cause the reality is, is that you attract what you put out. Um, and, and I mean, look, I, I even, I had to create a whole buffer day in my life because Mondays was just not worth it for my mind. So being around people on Mondays just ain't worth it. Thanks to my children, who keep me and my wife so busy on the weekend. Mondays just ain't a good day, right? So, um, the whole point is, is that if you can't present yourself, if you can't. Give off that kind of energy, then you need to stay at home, right? Uh, because you don't wanna begin to attract that with what you give off. So cons, so since we, we subscribe to that philosophy, that's one of our values at Brooks and Davis. Treat and respect one another like family. How many, when y'all are talking to people and y'all, and people are talking to y'all about Brooks and Davis, how many people mention the family thing? Like, oh, it seems like y'all are a family. Right, we get that a lot. Well, from day one, we've been very intentional about creating. That atmosphere. And as we scale and as we become the number one brokerage firm, that's something that we don't wanna lose. So the dilemma that we're always gonna have, and I don't want to say this is called a dilemma, but the thing that we're always gonna be thinking about is as we grow. How do we maintain that small company in that family field as we grow, as we grow out? So, and so where it starts with our values, right? And you know, and again, I'm not, listen, I don't know about you, but I don't like everybody in my family. I love everybody, but I don't like all of them. Even I think on Sunday, our pastor said that. The bottle ain't asking to like everybody. You asking to love everybody and I like everybody. All right, um, so even as we grow, right, we become the number one, we get all these agents. As the CEO, I'm not naive enough to believe that I'm gonna like everybody, right? But I am gonna treat and respect them and, you know, because we have the same reason that we do it in our families, because we have that thing in common, that blood, right? We got, we got the same blood going through our veins. So at Brooks and Davis, we the same brokerage firm, like that's just the same idea, right? Um, continually learning, improving, and operating in the most productive manner. So all that to say growth, right? You gotta, you gotta, you, if you're not growing, you're dying. I subscribe to the laws of nature, right? There's nothing else in nature that plateaus. Like some of these terms we use as humans, like I'm just plateauing or I'm just, I'm just stalling out. Nah, either you growing or you dying. Like it ain't no vice versa. So we wanna be in the mindset of where we're constantly growing and we're constantly getting better. So that's kind of what this means. And then continually operating in the most productive manner, really that's about impact, impact and contribution, right? You gotta ask yourself, man, when you wake up every day and you come and you do this business as a real estate professional, whose life are you really impacting? Or when you're, when you're gone and there's not gonna be a footprint from you even being here. And everybody should be asking themselves that every day. And when you assess it and when you look at it. It's not to beat yourself up about it, to get depressed about it. It's about asking yourself, how can I be better? Like, what's a better way or a better approach of, of operating the business that I'm doing, right? So we talk about real estate, a lot of people get in it because they wanna make money. They see kind of what's out there and the quality of life that real estate professionals can have. But if you really wanna have a lot of success in this business, you gotta get to the mindset of how many people can I help, period? Like, how many lives can I change and how many people can I impact through what I'm doing, right? And then, yeah, you'll get paid along the way, but it's really about, you're changing people's world with what we do, right? This really is the best industry for, period. Like, I can't think of any better industry that we're in. I don't care what anybody say about what we do and what we hear about other, whatever nomenclatures people use and what are the, whatever judgments people, people use on us being. Realtors and real estate professionals and that kind of, and just real estate, or you're just a real estate agent, none of that matters to me. Because I don't feel like there's any other industry or career that offers the opportunities that our career offers. As well as the opportunity to impact the amount of people. Because we don't just impact the person that we help, that transaction. Like, this is legacy building what we're doing, right? If you take somebody that's never owned a home, they, their, their family's never owned a home, and you introduce ownership to that person. Everybody connected to them, their mindset and how they view things is gonna be changed. And that's the kind of work that we do. And you need to be proud, right? That's not something that you ever, ever need to defend, right? So that's that. All right, always giving our best and every day making our best better. So that's all about, you know, giving your all, right? If you, I think I had a conversation with my kids once before about, look, if you're not passionate about this, find something that you're passionate about. Find something out there that you're willing to give everything that you have. And then, when you give it everything. Look for a way to give more, right? And that's kind of what that value is all about. All right, and then the final, the last one is commitment to four by four leadership. You know, I realize alone, everybody in here is an entrepreneur, right? So I want you to, you know, one of the things that we're transitioning to as a brokerage firm is, is really spending time on getting. All of our agents, getting all of you all to really embrace the fact that you're more than a Realtor, right? As I'm sitting here talking to y'all, I'm thinking of, I'm thinking of a theme. I'm thinking of a, of a movement, more than a Realtor. But you're more than a Realtor, right? You're an entrepreneur. You're a business owner. And what that means is. Whether you know it or not, the people that are connected to you and they see you as an entrepreneur and a business owner, they're seeing you as leading, right? So now, it's time to lean in on that. So what that tells me as a broker. Is that I'm not in the Realtor development business, or the real estate agent development business. Bro, Brooks and Davis is not in the agent development business. We're in the leadership development, right? So what we have to do is we have to develop you as business owners. So as you become better as a business owner and you have more impact in people's lives. Then those that are connected to you and your communities and your worlds are gonna be impacted because now you've become a better lead, right? So that's what that four by four leadership is about. It's about building a culture that when people get plugged into it. They begin to develop leadership, right? All right, and it's not one of those, uh, and leadership, leadership's a very big. Broad term and component, right? Um, it, it encompasses a number of things. You know, some people, you know, some people believe where leadership, leaders are made. Some people believe leaders are born, like. Whatever, whatever the spectrum that you own when it comes to leadership. The reality is, is that it's critical, right? It's critical in our communities. It's critical in this business, right? It's critical in our country. I think we're seeing that. How critical leadership is, right? So it's something that we all need to be intentional about. So at Brooks and Davis, we're intentional about it. All right, so what do we say? Five hundred billion, five hundred million, right? Twenty thousand transactions, all right? Uh, what do we say?
Sixteen thousand?
A lady said twenty-five hundred. Sixteen thousand. Which, which way is close, right? All right, here we go. Be the number one real estate company in the state in production and profitability. This is the number one company in the state in production and profitability. So half of a million, we own. Right, twenty thousand transactions. Forty-three hundred agents, thirteen offices. They're number eleven. That's not even the number one in the United States though. They're number eleven in the United States, right? And then this is, this is twenty twenty-one numbers. So more than likely over the last two years, this is expanding, right?
Um, where are they in Dallas? I mean, where are they?
So they're, they're close to Arlington. They're like a group of fourteen offices, Go Management, Keller Williams. So they're, they're close to Arlington, they're like a group of fourteen offices, Go Management, Kelly Williams Group, that's, that's in office. But we mentioned, well, we mentioned Metropolitan, but Metropolitan isn't even the largest one in Houston, Memorial is the largest one in Houston. And just, and if you think of just cutting everything in half, so we got somebody right up the street, that's doing four billion dollars worth of production. That has two thousand agents, that's, that did fifteen thousand transactions, think about that, that's over a thousand transactions a month.
An average sales price, that's surprising.
Who was that? It started falling. So, so when you think of a goal and, and pursuing something, now you can think of how expansive. It is as far as our intentions and our mindset as a brokerage firm. Makes, it makes for an exciting life, I tell you that, trying to, you know, working, working towards that. Alright, that's our core goal, alright, core priorities, so we'll talk about this. As a brokerage firm, you know, the first thing we realized is, is that a business. Your business is not, is gonna grow to the extent that you grow as a, as a person, right? So I'll use we as an example, alright, so, from where we are right now, to where I say we wanna, we wanna go, right? So we want to go from where we are right now, we want to go to eleven billion dollars worth of transactions, thirty-five thousand transactions, alright. Well, to get there, I have to personally develop and become the CEO, the leader. That can lead that kind of organization, right? And until I become the individual that can lead that organization, Brooks and Davis will never become that organization. And not even just myself, even those that are in leadership roles at Brooks and Davis have to become the kinds of leaders, like we have to become the kinds of leaders. That can lead that type of organization first, well, that's the same thing for you, right? If you're, whatever your production number is right now, if you want to double it, triple it, you want to ten X it. Well, before you can do that, you gotta ten X, right? You gotta grow, you gotta get better, you gotta develop, right, you gotta change habits, really, a lot of it is by habits. Like, you gotta modify habits, you gotta modify mindset, if you want to adjust. So our priority as a brokerage firm, the first one has to do with enhancing personal development. Y'all will see that later, because the way we execute on that is our, is our educational programs, as well as our business development opportunities. That's how you, and that's how you grow, like through the educational programs that we provide, that's how you're gonna grow. And, and develop personally, alright? Well then, I mentioned the business development opportunities, well, that, what helps the second one, which is exponential increase in business growth. So not only are we, as a brokerage firm, are we saying, alright, go out there and do business. We're actually providing you environments, we're providing you situations, we're providing you opportunities. To implement what you're being taught from an educational space, and from a training space, and a coaching space, right? We're actually putting you in position, so kind of like that hands-on type of work. To truly increase your business, because it's something that's important to us, it's a priority for us. So when you look at what we do, don't think that we're just haphazardly throwing stuff out there. Like, we're extremely intentional about how we think through the operations of this brokerage firm, alright? Alright, and then the third one is major expansion of the Brooks and Davis ecosystem, okay? Now, who can tell me, who are the three people that are in our ecosystem? When I, when I use the term ecosystem, we have three people, three types of people that. We consider in the Brooks and Davis ecosystem, who are those three types? Fans, that's one, and what's a fan?
People who are out there, see what we're doing, and say, hey, I'd like to be part of you.
Okay, so we got fans. Alright, what's an affiliate?
Students. Students that are not licensed yet.
Okay, students not licensed yet, boom, that do what, though?
That are.
But what, what has to happen for a person to become an affiliate?
Oh, join us.
They gotta sign up.
Sign up, right.
Just because a person's getting their real estate license, doesn't make him an affiliate, member of Brooks and Davis, real estate. So they have to sign up for their affiliate program, okay, so affiliates, alright, and then the last one. So we got fans, affiliates, and agents, right? And, um, so that's our ecosystem. So when we think of expansion of the Brooks and Davis ecosystem, what we're saying is, is that we want to expand. In all three of those areas, want more agents, obviously, want more student, real estate student affiliates. Alright, because that's a pool of people that directly, um, integrate, can directly integrate into our company. So we're talking about having more agents, we're talking about having more real estate student affiliates, because that's a pool that we can pull people from. And then we're also, uh, talking about having more fans, right? And that's why we got very intentional about how, from the digital, the, the digital social media space of what we're doing, right? With our Instagram, with our Facebook, with our YouTube channels, um, with our LinkedIn. Is really putting us in a position to better showcase all the things that we're doing at Brooks and Davis. So we can enhance how many fans and how many people buy in and support, even, even do our relationships. Alright, um, so, so we wanna, we're gonna expand our ecosystem, and we want to expand our ecosystem in all those ways. Um, and then the final one is, this is what's gonna help us with that, right? Creating and fostering a culture that is attractive and effective. So ultimately, what we're saying is, is that we want to deliver on the promises, we make, in our marketing, we make a lot of promises. We're talking to agents, when Laverne's talking to people, real estate student affiliates, she's talking to agents, and she's selling about Brooks and Davis, and the thing that we do. So we, we, we put a lot of promises out there, right? So, when we deliver on the promises, right? It's kind of two-part, not only do we have to deliver on the promises, we have to encourage. People that are receiving the promises to tell people, right? We gotta, we gotta give testimonies, we gotta give people stories, and we gotta get that out into marketplace, so people can see. That we're delivering on what we said we were gonna do, as it relates to, on real estate, real estate professionals. By doing that, and by creating that culture, by being, um, authentic, and being, being successful. And achieving those things, that's what's going to, it's gonna become viral, right? It's gonna become, and you gotta see what Brooks and Davis is doing, though, you think about getting your real estate license, and I check this team, this group out. Or, or, I'm, I'm a member of Brooks and Davis, maybe you need to come in, right? Or it's looking at the Google Business page, you just, one of our agents just gave us a Google review yesterday. About, and pretty much saying, hey, be a real deal, like that's, that's the kind of environment that when you create that, then people just. What it does is, it creates that you missing out, right, you missing out. So that's gonna help us achieve those goals, so that's why these are the priorities of the company, alright? So, we, at the end of the day, it can all be wrapped up in this one statement, right? What Brooks and Davis Real Estate Firm is about, is we're about having more real estate agents close more real estate transactions. It's as simple as that, right? We ain't gotta add no fluff to it, we ain't gotta add no substance to it, that's what we about, right? So if you want to be a part of a broker, that wants, that, that says that they're about you closing transactions. I want to be a part of that, that brokerage firm, right? That's, that's the kind of brokerage firm that we are, right? So it isn't about, let's just get a whole bunch of, let's just have a, a bunch of real estate agents, because there's brokerages out there, and that's what they're about. You want to get as many agents as we can get, right? We rack up on them monthly dues, or them, or them death fees, or whatever, whatever it is. We want to get as many of them as we can, and we don't care if they stay, as long as we got a, a open pipeline of them coming, we good. There's some brokerage firms like that, but then there's also some brokerage firms, it's like, well, we only want a certain amount, right? They want to stay small, they want to stay boutique, right? And they're, and they are, they're, they're intentional about their agents closing transactions, and if their agents don't close transactions, they kick them out, right? So it's some that's there, that's like that, well, I don't think either one of those models work. I think you should open it, bring as many people in, bring as many people in. That are willing to do, to do what's required, right, for them to be successful. And I don't know, like when Laverne first talks with somebody, she doesn't know if this person's willing to do what's required, because everybody's gonna say, yes, I'm willing to do it. But she doesn't know, there's no way for her to tell, right? The only way that we're gonna know, if you're willing to do what's required for you to be successful, meaning for you to close transactions. Is for when you get into it, right? So now we've become very, very, very skilled at quickly seeing if you're willing to do what it takes, right? And even me, we don't kick them out, we don't kick them out, right? Because they may change their mind, they may get on board, they may, who knows, we don't know what's gonna happen, right? But if it don't work, they gonna leave, right? Because, because we haven't created an environment that will be comfortable, like you're not willing to do what it takes. To put yourself in a position to be successful and close transactions, you won't be comfortable here at Brooks and Davis, and you're gonna want to leave, right? But, you know, kick them out, but that's what we're about, right? So we talk about those promises, and delivering on those promises. So if you come to Brooks and Davis, and you can see that you're closing transactions because of your affiliation with us. That makes people wanna, wanna tell us, right? Alright, so here's our leadership team, just, you know, don't want to take for granted that everybody knows everybody's role that's on the leadership. And kudos to my leadership, man, they meet with us, they meet with me every Friday. We meet, and we talk about the hard stuff, they give up their time, they give up their energy, their ideas. Um, you know, I can definitely say that they're, they're passionate about Brooks and Davis growing, right? They're, everything that I just showed, they, they're, they're, they're one hundred percent bought in to who we are. And to you all being successful, so when I say we're about having more real estate agents close more real estate transactions. These individuals are bought into achieving that, for everybody that's a part of Brooks and Davis, right? So again, give them a round of applause. But I truly appreciate everybody that's a part, uh, and that's, and that's doing their part, uh, when it comes. Okay, and if you have any questions right now, just put it in the chat, I'll circle back around and get to them. But right now, just put your questions in the chat, so I can go through the whole presentation. That's our leadership team, alright, so, uh, here's something else that came out, as it relates to the brokerage firm. So we did a survey, and we surveyed our top producers. And from that survey, what we were trying to determine was, why were people, why did you join Brooks and Davis? Why are you still here, really, that's what we were trying to figure out. With all the, there's a number of choices as it relates to being a, signed up as a broker, or, or getting, getting someone be in your book. So, why are you still here, why haven't you left, right? And from that survey, we were able to come up with a list of eight things that we called our benefits, right? So we, we see, these are the things, as a brokerage firm. That people are seeing as beneficial to them. So our thought process was, well, if our top producers, the people that are here, are seeing these things as benefits. How can we use these to really help with some of the other goals that we want, as far as showcasing? How can we lean more in on what our, 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 our agent base, our member base is saying, okay? So, I was surprised, because I thought the coaching was gonna be number one, right? I mean, I've been, I've been on this whole coaching thing for a minute, like, hey, man, we gonna be the coach, and that's gonna be the, that's gonna be the secret right there, baby. Once we tell them we coaching, they gonna give them all this coaching, that's what people gonna want, well, unfortunately, it was not, okay? So, actually, real estate education was the number one, right? That was the, the most valuable piece that people saw with being part of, of Brooks and Davis. Alright, it's funny, because Ricky was talking to me, he was like, man, it seem like y'all do a lot of stuff, we do, right? And this survey kind of, uh, contributed to us really leaning in on that, because we saw people were very, they saw a lot of value in the amount of. Trainings and lunch presentations, and, you know, having it to where it can be on Zoom, and it can be in person. And we put them on our YouTube channel, so now we got this library of information, like they really saw that educational component as something that was very beneficial, right? Alright, and then the other one that came out was our environment, we talked earlier about that family environment, and how we really lean in on, on, on creating that. Um, the, uh, Black Excellence in Real Estate, you know, that was one that, you know, there was a lot of controversy around, and we should. If we should showcase ourselves as a independently black-owned brokerage firm, and like, if we should do it, if we should not do it, and take on pigeonhole us. You know, how are we gonna become more diverse by doing that? And, and, and look, the leadership team got on with it, because I was like, the people said it's a benefit, so we need to put it on there, right? Now, we have, we have, um, and I'll talk a little bit about kind of what's some things that are coming out of pipeline. You know, what we've determined is, even if we don't never say that Brooks and Davis is independently black-owned. We've been here for fifteen years, people know us as a black-owned brokerage firm, like it's, I mean, if you go to the website. If you look at the leadership, if you look at the agents, if you look at the clients, if you look like, it's, it's a black-owned real estate company, right? And some of our top agents, you know, the ones that are responsible for paying my, my, my check and Larry's check and keep the lights on, said it's a benefit. Then we need to have it on the list, right? So Black Excellence in Real Estate is one of the benefits, alright, but now, we did take into consideration what everybody was saying. Because we know it, we're gonna be the number one brokerage firm, we gotta be able to diversify, we know that, right? But we've come up with another creative way to be able to do that, right? Um, community involvement, right, that was another one that was a surprise as well, that people saw that as a benefit, us being involved in the community the way we were. Do our relationships with the real estate association, what we're doing with the city, our relationships with the real estate association of Realtors, and the things that they do. Our real estate summit, our pre-home buy session, that we do on a monthly basis, that really taps into the community to educate them and support them. So we want to lean in on that, we started leaning in on that more, right? We're gonna do more of that, accessibility, I, since day one, before, before I started eating the rest of this stuff on this slide. Accessibility was the very first thing that I really leaned into, and this was maybe about ten years ago. And the thought was, to be as a differentiator from other brokerage firms, if I could put my, if I could position myself to be more accessible than other brokers. Meaning, if they call, I answer, no matter what their plan is, no matter how lengthy it is, no matter what the issue is. And even if I don't answer, I get back, I call them back, right? Because I know Laverne hears this, and I know, I'm pretty sure some of y'all have heard this, man, my broker won't ever, no one ever picks up the phone, my broker won't ever call me back. No one's ever available, I know we've heard that, right? So ten years ago, I was like, I'm gonna be the most successful broker, and I'm, and I'm still there, call me, I'm answering. You know, talking through, right? Uh, we gonna figure it out, it's so funny too, because like when some of our agents transition from developmental to transaction fee. Then they think, I can't call you no more. Well, I mean, I didn't want the transaction, so that means, you know, you can't get the money. The thought process is, I shouldn't be on the phone with you, though, now, if I'm on the phone with you, though, we gonna have to go back. But I definitely had that conversation, and we worked through it. So the accessibility, the leads, I know that's another one, Laverne, y'all give away, y'all give leads, y'all give leads, y'all give leads. So here's the funny thing, right, so being in this business twenty years, I realized that leads is not the solution, right? But most people, they feel like, oh, that's it, I gotta go where the leads are being handed to, right? So because of that, for the longest, I thought that, like, nah, we ain't telling them to give leads, because that ain't the solution, they need to stop asking for leads. That's not what's gonna fix the problem, it ain't the leads. Well, now, I did a whole three sixty, and I'm like, yeah, I'm gonna get your lead. But the reason, the reason I'm gonna give you leads is not because it's the solution, I'm gonna give you leads is because you need something. To work on, to grow, to develop, like you need to have a, you need to be having that conversation to see where your flaws is, right? You need to be maybe driving out and doing. You need to be maybe driving out and doing something and wasting your time, or getting hung up on, right? Or the deal blowing up. You need to be in a position to experience that, because that's one. So, since we've become as effective as we've become in generating leads, we have, so, yeah, why not give them out? We gonna give them out, right? But we knew that there were some other components that needed to be wrapped around that, like our lead distribution session every, every week, right? And then we were like, well, we only gonna give the leads to the developmental agents. It was like, nah, because the developmental agents wasn't giving the leads. So we like, we gonna give everybody them. If you show up, you get your two leads, I don't care what plan you on, because remember, our mission is, we wanna get to a million successes, right? And for us to get to a million, whoever gonna work the lead gonna get it, right? And then we're gonna put out, and the brokerage firms gonna put itself in a position to be able to monitor that, right? And then the last two was coaching. Come on, man, really? The last one was coaching. Alright, so, the group coaching, the one-on-one coaching, y'all know we've been doing the coaching for a long time, right? I think a couple of years ago, we opened up the group coaching to everybody, right? So, yeah, the one-on-one coaching, that's for the developmental agent, right? And again, you gonna be a transaction fee, you telling me you don't need one-on-one coaching, right? But I still wanted to provide a coaching opportunity for the entire organization. So every other week, we do a week full of group coaching. That means every day in that week, there's an opportunity. And matter of fact, this is the week, we are in the week of group coaching, right? Uh, and I, and what I really appreciated is, I have appreciated seeing my developmental agents, as well as my transaction fee agents, my seasoned agents, my leaders, participate in the group coaching, cause sometimes it ain't even really about me talking to the group coaches, it's about the individuals and them sharing their stories and their situations and their problems, and other people being able to see these are the challenges and how to walk through them, right? So, it's a very powerful, um, component of the organization, the group coaching piece. And then obviously, we have the one-on-one coaching, so those are our core benefits. Alright, so, who else still has the lead tree? Okay, scan, everybody pull they phone out. Scan, and I, I know Shay is gonna appreciate it, cause I'm sure she tired of y'all calling her for stuff that's on this link. Scan this QR code.
And save it. Bookmark it.
Cause I have it online.
If you, if you are online, scan the QR code and bookmark this link.
Save it, yeah.
Bookmark it. See, I don't go around a room. Bookmark it. Don't bookmark it on you, so y'all can stop calling Shay.
Everything is there.
Everything.
But still, that's already on that link.
Ninety-eight percent things that you need are on there.
Yeah, Shay gonna have to go through with that. Alright, my people online, y'all bookmark it. Everything you need is on this link, right? Again, we're, okay, you know, for, for, for a minute, we've been very intentional on how to efficiently and effectively execute on delivering on, on, from an operation standpoint. So this link has really helped out, right? So, you know, we do new, new agent orientation, and, you know, when you first sign up with Brooks and Davis, this is one, this is the first thing that Shay sends out. So, yeah, we gonna make sure you got the link and bookmark it, so it's easy to get to. Alright. Okay, B and B TV, how many people can tell me, how many five, how many digital shows do we have?
It's on your shirt.
Alright, okay, who, what, what's the first show?
Monday Night Live.
Alright, what's Monday Night Live about? What's the premise of that show?
It's a call reinforcement.
Uh-huh, for what?
For agents or anyone to ask a real estate question.
Good, good, good. Alright, so that's the first one. Monday Night Live on Mondays, y'all know what time it's, we do it on Mondays?
Seven.
Seven. Alright, so the next one is what? The one we do on Tuesdays is what?
Real to Life Podcast.
So what's the premise of that?
The spotlight of real.
Spotlight of what?
An agent or, not just the agent, but.
A real estate professional.
Real estate professional, alright, so we, we have people on, we have Realtors, we have mem, you know, members of H A R, like staff, H A R staff, we had mortgage professionals, we've had inspectors, we've had investors, anybody, anything that's, we've had insurance, right? So, real estate professionals, we had brokers, we had teams, we had all of that. We had people that worked with the city of Houston, you know, real estate capacity. So that's the Real to Life Podcast, and it's about, are we, is it about talking about real estate? What's, what's about, what we talking about on the Real to, Real to Life Podcast?
Passions outside of real estate.
Passions out, yeah, likes, right? That's why we call it the Real to Life, right? Cause how do you incorporate the real estate component, but let's not forsake the life component, right? Because I know that there are things outside of real estate that's important, because there are things outside of real estate that's important to me, that I'm passionate about. Alright, so then the other one is Real Estate, Real Estate Happy Hour Live, right? So what's that one about?
Talking about some of everything.
It's like shop talk, but random stuff.
Yeah, with real. Did everybody?
Current events.
Yeah, current events, gossip.
Yeah, we do, all of it. Ricky said pop coach, yes, all of it, right? Uh, so now, what's special about the Real to, the Real Estate Happy Hour? What's special about that program? That none of y'all have taken advantage of? Y'all gotta take advantage of it.
Everybody can join in.
Everybody, everybody can join in, right? All you gotta do is click on the link, and it's gonna automatically put you in the conversation with the rest of them, right? So you contribute, and those, now, when we have people join.
It's the best thing.
They're one of the best ones.
They are.
They're the best ones. We just got random people just hop on there, and we pull them into the conversation. I mean, on one of them, y'all can go back on the YouTube channel and see if, we had somebody that literally walked into the studio, like they popped in, and we told them, hey, get your seat, sit down. We pulled them into it. Yeah, and that was one of the best ones. It's good, right? So that's Real, Real Estate Happy Hour Live, and then Prime Real Estate Network. What's the premise of that? What's the premise of that show?
Where they spotlight business owners?
Business owners, yes. So that's where it's not just real estate professionals. It's a format, it's, the format is still an interview format, but it's real estate professionals. So now, look, I encourage you, if you have not, if I don't have you on the books, or you've never been a guest on the Real to Life Podcast, do it today. Now, here's the great thing, that link you just bookmarked, you can go in there and fill out the guest question app, and we can get your book, okay? I encourage you to do that, and I also encourage you, if you haven't been a guest on the Prime Real Estate Network, to be a guest on that one as well, right? The more, the more, I, the more digital content that you can create, cause this is what you gotta remember, digital content is forever, right? It never gonna, it's never gonna go away. As long as we got the internet, it's gonna be out there, right? So the more digital content that you can create, the better, especially when it comes to the analytics and the searching capabilities and things like that. So, we're providing you at least two opportunities, right? I mean, technically, if you jump on the Real to Happy Hour Live, whatever show that you jump on, you can use that as digital content for yourself, saying, and enhance your, your digital footprint, right? But at the least, you need to be a guest on the Real to Life Podcast and a guest on the Prime Real Estate Network. And on those, we'll send you the file, the actual digital file, that you can use, you can edit, you can chop it up, you can do whatever you, however you wanna do. Be as creative as you wanna be with the content that's been created, alright? So I really encourage you all to take advantage, and I know, I'm speaking for Jess, our super producer, hey, give Jess a hand.
I appreciate y'all.
She is the one that really, really drives the ship when it comes to, she is, she is definitely our super producer. And she be, and she be producing, well, okay? Um, so that's our, that's our B and B TV. I encourage you all to take part of this right now. Alright, how many people have gone to the Houston Real Estate Channel? Alright, everybody pull they phone out. Pull they phone out, scan that QR code, and subscribe to the Houston Real Estate Channel. If you are not a member of the Houston Real Estate Channel, you are missing out on a really, really good tool that you could use, that you should be using to attract business, okay?
Five words you pronounced wrong.
So now, what, what, what I can tell, so the reason, somebody tell me why this real estate channel is so powerful. I'm saying this is a powerful tool that you should be utilizing to attract business. Somebody tell me why.
Cause you get to stay used to thriving communities.
Why, what makes that powerful?
Because if you know which communities are thriving, when you get a buyer, you'll be able to take them to different places based off of just this particular channel, getting the inside scoop of what the communities offer, uh, getting the inside scoop, I'm assuming, of what the communities offer, and knowing when somebody come and say, hey, I'm looking for a community that has a community pool with also a clubhouse, uh, that is close to the mall, that's close to this, close to that, you can say, oh, I can take it.
Boom, so it, it enhances your, your knowledge, correct, your knowledge base, okay? What else? What other reason makes this a powerful vehicle for you to be able to attract business?
Well, if you run into that same client, you can easily share that provided the value of, are you given access to resources?
Okay, so, again, knowledge though, right? Alright, so.
Sorry, I got no speaker.
I mean, her name on the phone, she has a name. Okay, so, knowledge is knowledge, right? Alright, but now, I want you to, this is what I'm saying, to attract business. Why is, why is this a powerful tool to attract business?
I think it's a powerful tool to attract business and say, hey, have you heard about this community? Go to this website and they'll see you as the, the resource. She's only going to this website, I think I like this neighborhood. Maybe you can show me some more about it, so that's maybe the way to attract business.
Absolutely. Cause, cause look, how, how do people raise their hand and say that I wanna buy a house typically? Like typically, how do you find out somebody's interested in buying?
Ask a question.
Word of mouth.
Ask a question.
They ask a question. Word of mouth, word of mouth.
Are they just searching?
They search, like most times, people, you find out if somebody's thinking about buying a house when they ask a question about a property. If they say, how many bedrooms I have, right? Or, is this close to whatever, whatever, right? That's usually when you find, when somebody's telling you indirectly, I'm in the market, right? So now, we've created a channel of videos of all these different neighborhoods throughout the Houston Metroplex that you can literally send out into the digital space and say, this is brisling, right? So now, somebody may say, where is that located? What are they saying?
I'm, I'm.
I'm in the market, right? So you, we've given you a lot of bait to say, hey, take, take this bait, put it on your line, and throw it out into the ocean, right? So you start catching you some business. Content, right? People are always talking about, I don't have no content, I need to create content. Your brokerage firm has created the content for you. All you gotta do is cast it out, cast it out. So, that cha, that channel, and it's the kind of content that attracts buyers. It's information about neighborhoods, locations, properties, it's information about all of that stuff that you can cast out, so people can let you know, I'm in the market, and then you can follow up on it, right? So, very, very powerful tool. Alright, so everybody scan it and subscribe. It's easy to get, get, get the link, and you can take, um, individual videos and send them out, send them out to people, and you're, you're sharing things with people. Alright, uh, how many people knew that we had more than one location? Anybody who there? Alright, so, yeah, so we have our central locations, then we have our location, our west location, and then we have our north location, and then we got things in the works as relates to Austin, alright? Alright, website? When the last time y'all been to the website? And the last time you ever been to the website? Alright, so, look, listen, how many of y'all knew that you can go to the website, say you're meeting with a buyer? You can literally go to the website, click on the page for buyers, and do an entire buyer's consultation with what's on the website, all the way up to the point to where they sign a buyer's broker. How many of y'all knew that? Yeah, y'all didn't know that? You can. Now, how many of y'all knew that you could go on a listen presentation, a listen appointment? And with everything that's on the website, the page, the, the. You can have an entire listen, a conversation with, all from the website, did you? How many people knew that? Yeah, see, it's on the website. So go to the website, this is the website. Um, we've also made some enhancements to something else that we're about to launch when it comes to joining, right? So if you're having conversations with people, and they wanna join Brooks and Davis Real Estate Firm, and they want to know more, and they wanna see how, where they can, how they can sign up, you can all be done from the website. We gotta, we, we modified things, I'm gonna go into detail about that, we modified things, something happened. Okay, so go to the website. Alright, so, I mentioned before, right? The idea was member development and how to enhance member development. So, we sat down one day and we really thought about all the things that we do from a programing standpoint, right? And one thing that I learned, so I've, I've gone, I've been a part of a lot of coaching, um, organizations. And for one of those coaching organizations, when it talked about execution, it talked about a concept called chunking. Now, some people may have heard about chunking, when you chunk things together into groups, it's easier for you to execute on those things. Chunking similar things, right? So tapping into that concept, we sat down and we looked at all this stuff we were doing, kinda like what Ricky and I talked about, y'all do a whole lot of stuff. We looked at all of it, and it was like, man, how can we make it more digestible to our, to our membership base? And what we've identified is that we really have two types of programs. We have education programs, and we have business development opportunities, right? So, when we looked at all of our education programs that we do, and it involved these seven. And we, we weren't even intentional about this, it just kinda happened that it was fourteen total things, and they split even, seven education programs and seven business development opportunities. They just, and it just all organically happened, it was crazy. But, definitely wanna make you all aware and encourage you to take more advantage of this stuff that we're doing on a consistent basis, right? We have our trainings, we do that once a week, we have our lunch presentation. Now, what's important about the lunch presentation? Like, training is self-explanatory, right? And it enhances your knowledge currency. But what's important about the lunch presentation? And why you should participate in those?
You become a connect with the vendors that come out.
Right.
Stable relationships.
Absolutely. It increases your relationship, and it also increases your resource that you have access to, right? Because there's probably a lot of opportunities that you're leaving on the table, because you didn't know that there was a resource that could fill that gap. But we're very intentional about connecting with those individuals and bringing those people to the table, right? I literally was having a conversation in our group coaching about a young lady who had a concern about, uh, saving money, closing costs, down payments, right? Well, if I know that T D C U got a hundred and three percent financing program, then I have, now I have an option or a solution that I can deal with that objection, but if I don't know that, then what am I gonna tell that lady? Alright, well, once you save up enough money, give me a call. So that's why you need to participate in a lunch presentation, because you never know when you're gonna need to be able to tap into that tool, out of that resource, to help you close a deal, right? Alright, our monthly mentee workshop, how many of you all knew we did a, a, a workshop every month on a Saturday? A, a intimate hands-on workshop. How do people do that? Y'all didn't know it did. I can tell y'all didn't know, because y'all gonna be coming to it, right? It's, it's an, it's an added opportunity for you to get hands-on oversight, especially as a new agent, to get hands-on oversight of specific topics and specific subjects that you're currently working on, right? Another layer of support. So we do that, we, we already talked about the group coaching, the one-on-one coaching, the mentoring. How many, is everybody a part of the mentor program? Who else is a part of the mentor program? You got a mentor, you got a mentor, you are a mentor. I think we trying to figure that. You being a mentor? Okay, she said, okay. You got a mentor, you on the team, alright, so. Alright, so the mentor program, alright, and then finally our success in real estate machine. When's the last time you've been on the success in real estate machine?
Sales.
She's like, what's that? So, the success in real estate machine, what we did was, we took the real estate transaction from beginning to end, we broke it down into six different skill sets. So from initial phone call all the way to transaction management, like the initial phone call to meet client, scheduling the interview, showing the property, marketing the property, going through the contract to close, all the way, we broke it into six skill sets. And there's a series of videos, there's a series of documents, checklist, we got all that, all there, right? At your disposal, and that's the success in real estate machine. Now, where do you think you can go to access?
That link tree.
Exactly, somebody paying attention, we don't talk about Rick. It's all on there, alright? Alright, so those are our education programs. Alright, so now here is the business development opportunities, right? So the educational programs are there to enhance your, your, your personal development and for you to grow, it's knowledge, that, that kinda thing. Well, this is about putting you in an opportunity to where you can generate business, alright? So, we do our weekly lead distribution session every Thursday at five thirty, okay? That weekly lead distribution, these are leads that are generated from a lot of these events. So from our real estate summit, from our pre-home buyer session, from our bus tours, from our signs. We just have this accumulation of over three hundred leads because there's one thing that for lead generation, there's another thing for lead management. And that's where most agents are dropping the ball, is that they don't know how to properly lead manage. They can attract the lead, they can generate the lead, but they're not, they don't know what to do to make sure that they put themselves in a position to where that lead turns into something, they're not following up with it enough, right? So the lead, the lead distribution session is our way of providing supervision on the lead management component of things. So we do that every Thursday, you get leads, you get to, and we get to talk through where are the gaps so we can fill them, okay? Then we have our corporate open houses, we do that once a month. But then we have plenty of agents that are part of Brooks and Davis that have listings that want y'all to do open houses there, right? So that's, that's, that's an opportunity. Now here's the thing about open houses, if you're not knocking on doors, there ain't no point in you doing open house. I'm gonna say that again. If you're not knocking on doors in the neighborhood to tell the neighbors about the fact you're doing an open house, there ain't no point in doing it. Because the most valuable activity surrounding an open house is you going and knocking on the doors to see if there's another listing opportunity in that area. That's the most valuable activity. And if you're not doing that, you're just saying, you're, you're creating a flyer, you're putting open house on your Instagram, and then you just go there for two hours and you sit there and wait for somebody to show up, and I'm sorry to tell you, you just wasted your time, alright? Don't go out there and keep telling people how I'm doing all these open houses. You know, you wasting time is what you're doing, because you're not properly executing on what you, on how you should be using the open house, right? Open house is just a tool, right? But if you're not using it properly, right, you can have the most expensive hammer, but if you don't know how to build nothing, the tool ain't doing that for you, right? You don't know how to use it, right? So, the corporate open houses is a, is a, is a good tool, but you gotta use it the right way. Our building community tours, our monthly pre-home buyer session, shout out to Margaret, because Margaret's doing a phenomenal job of creating those, facilitating those every month, right? It's an opportunity for when you're following up with your leads, you have some value, you can tell people about, on a monthly basis, those people that said that they're interested or they're thinking about buying a house, right? It's a soft sale, it's not a hard sale, right? You saying, hey, if you wanna buy a house, call me, ain't nobody gonna call you, okay? Now, if you say, look, if you think about buying a house, I think this is an excellent event, you should participate in, right? Let me know if you want me to RSVP, right? Now you might get some engagement from your Instagram, if you put that on there like that.
It's on the tree?
It is on, oh, it's on? It's in the groupie though, okay? And the groupies on the tree. When you see you're in the groupie, you get the flyer, but we do it every month. Alright, our consumer, our consumer bus tour, we got our, uh, real estate summit that's coming up in October, that's huge, right? That's huge. We get about two hundred people come to that, so it's our partnership with the Church at Bethel's family. We bring in a lot of, like last year, I think we got close to thirty vendors participate, and we close two hundred people, we get all that registration information, and a lot of the people that we're following up with today. There are people now, then look, there's a person right now Margaret's working with, and we attracted that person from the real estate summit that was in October last year, right? So, those opportunities are in place, and then we have virtual downtime, alright? Virtual downtime is that from people calling in, having leads, so Shay, do people call the office and they need help?
All day.
All day, every day. And if you have virtual downtime, who gets those people, Shay? Whoever answers the phone, right? But Shay gotta keep answering the phone, why you gotta keep answering the phone, Shay?
Nobody signs up for virtual.
Nobody signed up for virtual downtime, right? So the opportunities are there, the business development opportunities are there, we know it. Alright, so, quick rundown, these are our twenty twenty-four goals, I showcased these at our town hall meeting that we did last year, I mean, in January to end out twenty twenty-three. So our goals, we got four goals, wanna double gross, double company gross income to three hundred ninety-four thousand. We wanna double agent member production, right? Cause remember, we're about having more real estate agents close more transactions. So, agent member production is a key metric for us, and we wanna double, right? We wanna increase agent member participation. And that's, that's me here standing showcasing, hey, we got these seven educational programs, we got these seven business development opportunities, and you need to participate in them, right? If you're gonna get to a point to where you have more success, you gotta participate more, okay? And we taking it to the next step, I'm, I'm about to go to that right now, taking the next step, really encouraging you to participate, alright? And then we wanna double our agent member count. So, that we ended last year with eighty-one, we wanna end this year with a hundred and sixty-two, let's double our agent, okay? Alright, top five, so now this is for the first five months of the year. This is our top five productive agents, meaning that they closed the most, the most transactions within the first five months. So, shout out to the five-star team representing, JT, Penelope, Rob, and the number one producer for the first, uh, for the first season. Uh, and then we see those that, that are to follow, right? Um, so shout out to our top five producers. Alright, and then this is the list of all of our producers. So these are, this is our producers list, everybody that closed a transaction has some product production for the first five months of, of, of the year, so shout out, yeah, yeah. Look, here's the reality, it doesn't even, it doesn't even matter what the number is, the fact that you're on this list, you've achieved something great. And the reason I'm saying that is because studies show that of the fifty thousand members that are part of the disassociation of Realtors, thirty-three percent of them didn't close one transaction in twelve months. One, right? So the fact that you did one, you are better than a third of the licensed individuals just in our metro. So, yeah, that's something to applaud. Now, I wanna get you into the top ten percent, cause let me tell you why. Studies also show that the top ten percent are responsible for half of the production. So half of the amount of transactions that were closed in the Houston Metroplex was done by a little over five thousand people, out of fifty thousand. And half of the amount of transa- the number of transactions that were closed, not even production, but the number that was closed, was done by a little over five thousand people, right? So we wanna get you into that. But that's industry-wide, ten, uh, less than ten percent, industry-wide is responsible for half of the production. So at Brooks and Davis, man, if we can just make that, if we can get our number to twenty percent, or we can get our number to thirty percent being responsible, then you can see how life changed. So that's the code that we're trying to, trying to crack, how to get agents to be more productive. So that's our top producers list. Oh, and these are all the agents that joined in season one, so we had twenty-two agents join. Shout out to those individuals. Uh, let's see, I don't know, it looks like, y'all, oh, yeah. Alasia on there too? Alasia, let's go. Teresa, yeah, Teresa on there, alright, good. And then Manuel, Manuel's on here.
Yeah, Manuel's on here.
Alright, so congratulations, alright, so those are the people that, uh, that joined in season one. Alright, so let's talk about a major player. So I said before, I was gonna showcase, we're gonna take it another level as it relates to participation, alright? So this is something, and I'm gonna pull Jackie in on this as well, and I think, just wanted you to record, or somebody record me talking about this.
I thought it was Luca.
Alright, so. Does this say anything? We decided, not we decided, we realized that all Brooks and Davis agents aren't the same, right? And that's okay, it's not a good thing, it's not a bad thing, it's just a thing, right? So, what we had to determine is, how do we quantify, how do we quantify the type of Brooks and Davis agent that puts us in the best position for them to be successful? How do we quantify that? What does that look like? How do they, how can they show us that, right? And what we determined was that there were four things, four intangible things, that if a person brings that to us, like you bring that to me, and I can guarantee your success. You bring me these four things, right? And these are the four things that I can teach you. You gotta choose, it's a decision, you gotta decide these four things, right? And that's the four things that's on here. You gotta decide that you gonna hustle, that's a choice, okay? You gotta decide that you gonna be teachable. You have to decide that you gonna be coachable, and you have to decide that you gonna follow instructions. You're gonna have to choose these things, this isn't something that you can get out of a book, this isn't something that you can get from coaching, no. You gotta make a decision, that I'm gonna do these things, alright? So, we called those things, and we said, if a person brings us those things, they a major player. They ready to be, they're, they're ready to be a real estate agent player, because we can handle the risk, the brokerage firms gonna handle the risk. If you, you choose those four things. Now, this is what we know. If we ask, if I ask, I've been on a lot of recruiting interviews, LaBurn's been on a lot of recruiting interviews and had casual conversations, and I'm gonna ask you, you, you got hustle, and what you gonna tell them? Oh, absolutely. I'm gonna say, you teachable, what you gonna say then?
Yes, absolutely.
Absolutely. You gonna say, you, you coachable, man?
All day.
All day, baby, tell me, I'm gonna go, right? Put me in, you follow instructions, you ain't meant to give me an instruction right now, I'm gonna do it. Everybody gonna say they had these, everybody, right? But here's, this is what my twenty years of experience and the thousands upon thousands of agents that I've engaged with, most of them ain't got it, right? So it ain't about what you say, it's about what you show. So you have to show us that you got hustle, and you're coachable, and you're teachable, and you're, you'll follow instructions. So we taking our educational programs, and we've taken our business development opportunities, and now we have fourteen things that we can look at for you to show us if you got these, these attributes, these attributes on the table. We can see it through your participation, right? Remember we said, that's something that we wanna get, more participation. So now you can show us through your participation that you're a major player. So, all of the business development things shows if you got hustle. You can't tell me you have hustle and you don't participate in no, I'm telling you, I'm giving you leads, and I'm showing you how to call them and what to say to them, you just gotta show up for thirty minutes once a week, and you not showing up ever, and you said you got hustle, nah, you ain't, no, cause it can't get no easier than that, right? I'm just telling you make phone calls. We tell you, we got this corporate open house, we gonna go out here, we gonna knock on these fifty doors, and they come on, knock on these doors, we tell these people about this open house that we have coming on, and you like, man. I don't know if I got the time for go knock on the doors or participate in the open house. Then we got this pre-home buyer session there, we got these twenty-five hundred flyers, we talked about on Friday. Every month for the next four months, we gotta get out, we need to have six hundred conversations around the pre-home buyer session, can we talk about that? Six hundred conversations around a pre-home buyer session, we have a flyer to start the conversation, right? We just need you to come. What they gonna say, Margaret? Uh, Margaret be like, man, we got anybody that, that's gonna, that's, that's gonna pass out, that's gonna go talk about, you know, we got anybody, we got anybody, right? You can't tell me that you, you can't tell us that you have hustle, right? And you not showing up. Same thing with the real estate summit and the other, virtual downtime. Shay gotta keep answering the phones, Shay gotta keep answering the phone. We telling you, people calling, and they got real estate leads, that you can help. And all you gotta do is go to the link tree, click on a link, pick a date and a time, and say, that day, that time, I'm gonna answer the phone. That's all you gotta do, and then answer the phones. Shay gotta keep answering them. Alright, so you can't tell me you got hustle, that's happening, alright? You can't tell me you're teachable, you ain't come to the train. You can't tell me you're teachable, you ain't came to no lunch presentation, you not participated in the monthly mentee workshop, then who's teaching? Get taught. If you're not participating in these things, when are you getting taught? You're coachable, but I ain't seen you in no who coaching session, I ain't seen you in no one-on-one coaching session, but you're coachable, how is that? Help me, help me understand. Help me understand how you're coachable. Help me understand, it ain't, it's not math, the math ain't math, alright? And then, and following instructions, right? So again, we got our mentoring, you ain't say, you ain't talk, I can't, you can't tell me last time you talked to any mentor, right? I, your mentor is there to tell you and to direct you and to show you exactly what you need to be working on, what you need to be working towards, right? If you been hust- if you been hustling, then you should have people and opportunities and situations that you need to be going to your mentor with. And then your mentor is gonna give you guidance, and then you need to follow that guidance to move forward. I got some of my mentors telling me, man, they won't listen, right? They won't, they won't, they won't do what I tell them to do. How is that? These people that been in their, they been in business fifteen years, got a boat loaded and instructions under their belt, you ain't did nothing, and you not gonna do what they tell you to do, what are we, what are we doing? The math ain't math, so following instructions and then success in real estate machine, I've conversated before. Some, y'all, y'all ain't know where they, how to get to. But the success in real estate machine gives you a play-by-play piece of execution, right? You tap into it, that show, me being able to see your activity on it, that's telling me, hey, this resource, I can go to this resource and it tell me what to do, and I keep coming to this resource, and I keep doing what it tells me to do. So, hustle, teachable, coachable, follow instructions. So what's the four, what's the four attributes of a major player?
Teachable, coachable, follow instructions.
Four, simple, we keep it simple, right? So, major player. So, this is what we decided, right? What we decided was that we need to get a public commitment. Ooh, I look at him. We need, as a brokerage firm, we need to get a public commitment. So since we've identified the attributes, we've identified the way for a person to show us if they have these attributes. The only thing we need now is a pledge from the people that they're going to choose to do these things. No, 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 let me see, no, DJ, no, 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 not yet, not yet. Because I mean, cause listen, it's one thing to say, it's another thing to sign. See, it's one thing to say, it's another thing to sign. What they say, Evans, it's one thing to say, but it's another thing to sign, right? So, this was the official launch of the major player pledge, right? We've identified the attributes, we've identified a way for you to exemplify it, now we're asking for you to pledge to do it. And we gonna, and we gonna make it even, we gonna make it easy for you, we gonna put it in diapycine, you can sign a license. But, but Evans, this is your public pronouncement that you gonna pledge to do. And it's simple, right? We just saying that as a Brooks and Davis real estate firm major player, I agree to attend one lunch presentation and or training program. I ain't saying you gotta come to both of them. She'll come to both of them, we ain't doing nothing, but I ain't saying you do, but at least one. Attend one one-on-one coaching session and/or group coaching session per week. One, one a week. Participate in one minor business development opportunity per week. Now, let me tell you what a minor business development. A virtual desktop, right? Lead distribution session. Attend one of them per week. Use the daily success habits tracker at least five times a week. So now, for those of you all that are participating in the one-on-one coaching, that's where you're gonna get exposed to the daily success habits tracker, where you're gonna get that tool, and where you're gonna get coached on using that, right? It's a very impactful tool that helps you measure daily if you're doing the types of activities that's gonna help you take your business to the next level. So, you're pledging to use it five times a week. You're gonna achieve an average of sixty-one daily success habit points every day, right? Again, it's a, it's a, it's a concept of measuring your activity, right? There are, these habits have a point assigned to them. You're saying, I'm gonna get to sixty-one every day, alright? You're gonna, I'm pledging to use the lead tracker and/or CRM. Again, the one-on-one coaching, you'll get exposed to that. I'm pledging to use the My Perfect Week scheduler, right? How many of y'all heard me talk about the currency conversation, about your currencies? What I say is your number one most valuable currency? Time, right? So the My Perfect Week scheduler is gonna help you make sure you're not wasting your most valuable currency. And it don't matter how long you've been in real estate. Everybody gets the same amount of that currency every day. It don't matter what your pedigree is, it don't matter what your, um, what your skin color is, it don't matter how smart y'all, it don't matter how long you've been in real estate, it don't ma, none of it matters. Everybody get the same amount of that, and it's the most valuable. The difference is, some people are using it better, a lot better, exponentially better than other people. But we all get that. So My Perfect Week scheduler's gonna help with that. Create a top fifty list. What's the second most valuable currency? Relationships, right? And most of us are sitting on our relationships. We trying to go out there and meet new people, and we ain't nurtured the relationships we already have in our pocket. That can help us move our di, our business forward. So, create a top fifty list, engage everyone on my top fifty list in a meaningful way every month, right? And then finally, participate in one major business development opportunity once a month. So that's pre-home buy session, that's open house, right? That's real estate summit, consumer bus tour, those are the major ones. So, you gonna get this sent to you, along with some information that further articulates what I'm talking about here, and you gonna put your name on it. Every, you gonna sign it. Everybody. Who all gonna get it?
Everybody.
Just, just the mentees gonna get it. So just the, just the transaction fee.
Everybody.
Just the leadership.
No.
Everybody gonna get the major player pledge, okay? Now, you don't have to sign. You don't have to. You don't have to sign, right? But like I said before, starting today, there's gonna be those Brooks and Davis agents that are major players, and there are gonna be those Brooks and Davis agents that are not major players. It's gonna be two, two kinds, right? Now, this is what that does for us, for me as your broker and your CEO, right? If you tell me, like, I'm telling you, I'm a major player, I'm committed to it, I'm pledging to it, right? You're telling me that, and what I'm telling you is, I'm guaranteeing your success. If you tell me, and our leadership, I'm a major player, I'm choosing to be that, and I'm telling you, I'm choosing to guarantee your success. I'm gonna do whatever it takes. We're gonna do whatever it takes to guarantee that you're successful in this business. But you ain't got to sign, right? And if you don't sign it, what I ain't got to do? It's, it's simple, right? We gonna keep it simple. It don't make you a bad person, it don't make me a bad person, it don't make me a good person, none of it, it don't make none of that. All it is, is if you pledge this to me, I'm gonna pledge something to you. If you don't pledge to me, I'm not pledging to you. But we can, we still gonna work together. We still gonna do it, we still gonna do what it takes, we still gonna rock it out. But, I got, we gonna have our major players, and we gonna have everybody else, right? That's what we gonna have. How y'all feel about that?
Great.
Y'all feel, y'all feel good about it?
Let's go.
Oh, look at that, that's next level of accountability. That's what we can say, accountability. How y'all feel about it online?
Of those four characteristics of a major player, which one do you find is most lacking? Hustle, teachable, coachable, follow instructions.
Follow instructions. Now, let me tell you why that's the most one that's lacking, is because most, what I find is, is we like to understand before we do it, right? And as a new realtor, right, so you want, it, it's not gonna make sense to you. When your mentee, when your mentor tells you to do something, or when I tell you to do something, it's not gonna make sense to you, because you've never done it. It's not gonna, it's not gonna make sense to you until after you do it. Then you're gonna see why we told you to do that, right? So most people won't follow the instruction because they don't understand. So that's the, that's the one that, the biggest one that we're saying. After building a major player pledge, this is the last thing. Because we built the major player pledge, now, from a marketing standpoint, because I said, if you pledge to me, what am I pledging to you?
Guarantee success.
Guarantee your success, right? So now, we're launching our money-back guarantee. This is going out to the whole world. And Brooks and Davis real estate firm offers a money-back guarantee to agents that join our, that join our brokerage firm.
And take the pledge.
Oh, Kim, stop it. Alright, so we're, 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 we're gonna let the whole world know, right? Because when you think of all, like, competition, you think of all the options that agents have, right? I don't know of any other brokerage firms that are offering a guarantee of success, right? They offer, we got the best technology, we got these pretty flyers, we got this beautiful office, we got trainings, we have mentor program, we have coaching, but how many of us saying, we gonna guarantee you success if you join us? Anybody ever seen one? Anybody ever heard of guarantee?
No, not one.
Not one, right? Alright. Y'all mean the Keller Williams ain't guaranteed this yet? E S P? Century Twenty? Call Wilmer? No, I'm saying, I guarantee you one of these. Wow, okay. Well, I know one. We guaranteeing it, right? Alright, so now to Kim's, Kim's question. I mean, I grew coaching by the story. Alright, this is the money-back guarantee. If you, and it's two, we got two. So we, we saying, man, we just can't, one enough just ain't good. We gotta get two of them, right? So, if you haven't closed one transaction within the first ninety days, we will refund you all monies that you have paid to Brooks and Davis real estate firm. So that's ninety days, three months. So that's onboard fee, that's member dues. We'll refund it back to you, get back to you. Okay? That's the first money-back guarantee. The second one is, if you haven't closed one transaction within the first year, that's twelve months, not only will we refund you all the monies that you paid to Brooks and Davis, meaning, so that's us giving you your money back. You gave us money, we giving it back to you, right? We'll also give you whatever money you paid to H A R. We'll give you whatever money you paid to the N L S. We'll give you whatever money that you paid to Super. That's close to two thousand dollars, right? Now, we didn't get this money. We didn't get that money, and we didn't get that money. So that's coming out of our pocket, and we giving to you if you haven't closed one transaction within the first year. But, guess what? Kim, what you gotta be?
You gotta be a hustler, coachable, teachable.
You gotta be a major player. If you join our brokerage firm, and you publicly declare, huh, by signing your name, Evans, that you gonna be a major player, then you qualify for this money-back guarantee. How was that? It's a game changer. So now it helps us differentiate, because we know we serious about, well, I'm serious about what I'm talking about, we serious about it, right? So if you just as serious as me, you can't help us see success. Success gonna chase you down, right? You know, we talking about one transaction, believe me. Like, if you serious, it's too much opportunity, right? But you gotta be serious. So you show us you serious, then it lines up with our seriousness, and you gonna make it happen. Go ahead, Evans. Money-back guarantee.
I think, I think, um, I think Ricky's trying to make a correction.
Okay, last, so we got upcoming events. We, Jackie, we have this top producer panel, which I think is gonna be amazing, right? So what we did is, it's gonna be July eighteenth, so be on the lookout, we're, we're finalizing the flyer, huh Shay? We're finalizing the flyer, so y'all gonna get that. Um, we, we took our top five, so not the ones from twenty-twenty-four that I just showed you. It's the ones from twenty-twenty-three. Took our top five, um, agents, and we're putting like a mixer, like a, an intimate fireside chat with them. So you can hear from them, what they've been doing, best practices, hear their mindset conversation. You know, well, we're gonna have some, some beer, some wine, like some, some light, uh, light bites. Uh, and that's gonna be July eighteenth, right? Yeah, we want you to, Mariah. That's gonna be NRL mortgage, NRL mortgages corporate office. Yeah, the one off Augustus. So there, I partnered with that event. Uh, that's gonna be July eighteenth. Alright, and then also, something that's upcoming, I remember I, I talked about the, one of the benefits was black excellence in real estate, right? And I talked about how we were getting a little bit of kickback and, and concern around it pigeonholing us as a brokerage firm, right? Well, what came from that conversation, it was a very, very valuable conversation. What came from that conversation was, what if we do what we've done within the black community with Brooks and Davis? What if we do that from a branding standpoint in other communities? And we speak the voice of that community as a brand, and build a brand. So it's not Brooks and Davis saying that, that next. It's its own brand. Now, it's powered by Brooks and Davis on a, on a high level, but it's its own brand, right? So what's coming down the pipeline is, is that we've identified the first community we've already started working in, it's gonna be the Latino community, right? And the name of the brand is gonna be called Confer Casa Fresco. Right? It's powered by Brooks and Davis, it's the next generation of movement. Shout out to representatives that's helping us out with that, Vanessa Soto, Manuel, uh, has been helping us with that. Mary Lou, one of our E C C interns, been helping us with that. And the way that we've approached that community, because, well, through this journey, what I've realized is, what, like, we're different. I mean, it's, it's crazy when you say it out loud. But the reality is, is, is that the black community and the Hispanic community are different. We have different, different needs, different worldviews, different beliefs, like, it's different, right? So, I've been educated big time going through this process about truly understanding this community, because we wanted to be sincere on how we spoke to them, right? Especially, and we know how, uh, what's it say, cultural appropriation and how people use that. And we didn't wanna be a, we didn't wanna be a culprit of that. So we wanted to be sincere on how we impacted that community to begin to help us achieve our goal of, again, one million successes and helping people satisfy their real estate needs. So we're making some big, he, I put that in upcoming events, because here real soon, realistically, before the end of the summer, we'll be officially launching Confer Casa Fresco. In the name of the movement, so we created a whole movement around. And Confer Casa is just one component, it, it handles the real estate component of the movement, but the movement is, is called Latinos United, uh, Latinos United. Uh, I can't think of the last part. Manuel well on here? Oh, Latinos United for Economic Growth. That's the name of the movement. And each of our team members, we have a banking member, we have a mortgage member, we have a tax member, we have, and then the real estate member, we have a credit member that are all working together to help the community expand in the real estate space. So I'm super excited about that. Alright. Last but not least, they added a slide? That slide is supposed to be on there. Alright, oh, I guess, I think Jeff added this slide. Just snuck a slide in on me. Okay, so we have our merch store. So, look, now that you, now that you got the pledges, right? Now that you got the buy-in, go get you some merch, right? So, uh, Shay, Shay has the polo on. I got that, I got all the stuff. I got the hat, I got the hoodie, I got the, we got the cups, we got all kinds of stuff, right? I mean, I really like, do y'all like our new logo? It looks really good on, on eyes. So yeah, you can go to the website, go to the website, access the merch store, and you'll be able to get you some merch. Get you some merch, man. Go, be, begin to represent, what they say? You need to represent your brokerage firm. Be proud of, let's go. Alright, so that's, see, they put the other slide. Okay, that was this one. They snuck one in, I wasn't expecting that one. Alright, so, as we close out, as you all leave, if anybody has any questions, anybody has any concerns, anybody wants to give feedback or comment, we can do all of that. You know, since we went over a little bit, we can do all of that as we, so I'm, I'm gonna be here, I'm still gonna be on Zoom. Uh, I know there may be some people that hopped on for group coaching, y'all can stay on as well. But we can kind of utilize this as the vehicle to, again, answer questions, get your comments. If you have a concern, right? If you got an issue, here's an opportunity for us to, to take place in that as well. And it looks like we have some food left as well to drop.
So, well, I guess first, a little comment to, I was blown away by this presentation. Everything that you talked about, you know, your goals from doubling the production to profitability, it all aligned so well, like, your goals and what you guys are doing is lining perfectly. And all the resources that you have available. I've been haunted by a lot of different real estate office, and, and you guys do a lot for your team, your people, and a lot of resources available. That would be really cool to see. Um, and, 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 you know, as we're diving into the Latin community, coming in at the end of this summer too, like, how quickly that's going to about, I don't know how we're working on that yet. Those, I see how those ideas turn in your head, and coming from wish, very exciting. We don't have a lot, but if you wanna give a couple gift cards out to the first couple, uh, major players or something like that, or however you wanna go about that.
Let me see, well, at first, I, I, I gotta get one.
Ask a question.
Yes, you gotta get one. Alright, so, shout out, thank you, Ricky. Let's see.
Go to the core values.
See who knows the core values. This one, this what I'm gonna use this for, this how I'm gonna use it. Alright, everybody here, alright? So, this week, or maybe early next week, we're gonna be sending out the major player pledges, alright? The first person to sign their major player pledge.
I know that's right.
Is gonna get this started. First, first, and it go out to who?
And you can't say you signed it, you got tried to do it, had to sit.
You will be able to see who signed it. They will get, they will get. Let me get the hard copies. They will get it, they will get it. Alright, well, thank you, thank you, Ricky. Thank you, everybody. Alright, so, anybody, anyone have any questions? Wasn't any questions or anything?